Can I use your gentleman?
Sure.
Good evening. It's 7:20 PM. We're at the Littleton Zoning Board of Appeals. We're at 37 Shattuck Street, Room 103. And we have some business to go over and we also have a single meeting tonight. We've been sitting here trying to solve a dilemma. And for the hearing tonight, we seem to have a pretty full room of abutters. And I don't know what position anybody's taking yet, but I wanted to make this announcement. We have four people in the room at the Zoning Board of Appeals table. Three of us are members who have been sworn in. The fourth one has been a member for over a decade, but whose term of office expired on June 30. Unfortunately, Rod was not, Rod Stewart, who's the member whose term expired, did not receive the email telling him the term expired. It was misdirected by mistake and inadvertence. And so he wasn't reappointed by the selectmen, nor was he sworn in for this meeting. In addition, we have another alternate member named David Outman, who was not able to attend tonight.
And John can't attend.
John Field's term expired the same way Rod's did. And I don't know if John is seeking reappointment or not. But I have here a person who can listen to the hearing. Now, the rules under the ZBA say, we can have a meeting with a quorum of three, but we cannot hear an appeal or a variance request or a special permit request. I believe in front of us is a variance tonight. We cannot hear that without four members. And we need a four out of four vote to pass it or a four out of five vote if we have a fifth member. Now Cheryl reminded me of the rule of necessity, and I've just looked that up. The rule of necessity only lets us count a conflicted member if the member speaks up and announces the conflict and promises that he's not going to use the conflict in any way during the hearing, and we're satisfied with that. So that doesn't help us here. But what does help us is we have the ability to use the mullen rule. The mullen rule says that if a member's not here and we've listened to the whole appeal and that member is agreeable to listening to the whole appeal on the recorded tape, then the mullen member can come back into the second or continued hearing and as if he started with us at the beginning and can vote on it. David Outman is the alternate qualifies for that. If everyone is satisfied that I'm bending the rules just a little bit to even hear the appeal at all. And the reason I'm willing to bend those rules a little bit is because with Rod's experience on the board and his presence here tonight, I'm going to regard him as a fourth for the appeal pending the selectmen reappointing him and his getting sworn in in front of Diane Crory. So if all of that happens in due course, which I hope that it will, I'm willing as the chairman to select a short continuance after we've heard everything so that he can get sworn in and he can be the voting member and we can all reconvene here, not in the usual one month from now, but in a period two or three weeks from now or 10 days from now.
We have to re-announce.
We have to repose.
Well, you can't officially continue the hearing because we don't have four people.
We can officially continue the meeting.
We can.
Yes.
We just can't officially vote on the appeal. And I'm bending the rules just a little to hear the appeal in deference to those of you who've come out tonight. I don't want to send you all home to come back to have the same result because when I say the same result, since Rod is a voting member two weeks ago and will be a voting member a week from now, we're going to have the same result. We're all going to hear the same thing at the same time. And I'm going to defer to the applicant and the abutters. If anyone objects, I want to hear it. But if you're okay with that, I like that result better than Mr. Outman mulling in later because Rod will be here to ask questions in here and see your reaction to the application. Okay?
Do they still have to mullen in later as well?
Mullen, I don't think Rod will have to mullen in. He'll be here to hear it in person, which is probably.
But his vote, his vote won't count until after he's been sworn in.
Understood.
Is everyone okay with that? Does anyone want to object to that?
Bruce Ringwald is representative for the applicant. We're fine.
Okay. Any abutters, you don't even have to tell me your side of the story or your position. Would you rather wait and have us four qualified and sanctioned members or would you like to go forward tonight? Your choice. Anybody who would like to stop going forward, raise your hand. You don't want to go forward tonight. Okay. Is there anything I can do to change that?
No, it just seems overly complicated. If there were one variable that you're trying to tweak, that would be fine. But it sounds like there's multiple.
What if, what if I, what if I took the second variable out? What if I take out the alternate mulling in? And I just say to you, can we all act as if this is a qualified board for tonight? You'll be able to hear everything. You'll know and will know everybody's position. And then we'll continue the hearing. And at the continued hearing, we can repeat everything, start all over again. But it will be the same four people. Would that satisfy you? Okay. That's fine with me, too. We're not going to use David Outman at all. And we're not going to let him mullen in. And that variable is off the table for now.
But you.
I'm sorry. So could Rod listen today? And once he gets sworn back in, he can vote on it at that point?
That's what I'm hoping to do. And my continuation will enable you all to come back and add to or re-question or if, depending on how it goes, give the applicant time to negotiate or barter or whatever they, you know. We at this board like to see the neighbors happy. And so what I'd like to do is let everybody hear it while you're all here and let you hear each other. And then we can continue it and you can speak again in the continuance. It'll give you time to think about it as well.
How about you, Ms.? You raised your hand.
I would just like to see a fully qualified board at this moment in time without all these things added in that detract from fully qualified.
Well, the question is, is everybody willing to come back in a couple of weeks?
Well, that's our alternative. How soon can we reconvene?
Let the neighbors. I'm going forward unless somebody really doesn't want me to, and that's their choice, not ours. Go ahead.
Hasn't he been on the board for the past 10 years?
More than 10, yeah. He's been on for more than 10 years. And the only reason he's not fully qualified today is because the email went to the wrong address. His term and mine expired on the same day. I got my email and got sworn in about a week ago. He just didn't receive his email, so he didn't know to go and get sworn in. And his term expired, by the way, June 30, which is 17 days ago. Yes, Mr. Goddard.
Yeah. What about the concept of a holdover appointment? That a member of an appointed board remains until they are replaced or resign?
I'd love to apply that concept. I am not sure how it applies in this instance.
I just did.
And I think as chair, I know that there are some situations in which when you don't have more than three members because no one applied for the job, I think the chair is entitled to appoint members for the hearings with some notice. If I would have known, I would have appointed him as a holdover. And I can do that today under an exception to rule of necessity. I can and will do that today. What I'd like not to do is to vote it until he's formally sworn in. Does that make sense to you? Now, do you know Mr. Goddard? And you know that he's the town moderator? So he's got some, he's got some knowledge of the boards and the holdover stuffs.
I don't know.
Oh, okay. Mr. Goddard, Mr. Goddard is the town moderator for the town of Littleton. He works closely with all the boards and with town council on things like this. And so his suggestion of applying the concept that a member can continue to serve on a board until his successor is duly elected and qualified, in this case, his successor will be himself.
I took the ethics training less than a month ago. And I thought, sure, there was a part in there that if you were shorthanded, you could not refuse to take a case. If there was only three members, it was not an excuse not to hear a case.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not trying to shut down your information. I just don't want to overcomplicate this. I liked Mr. Goddard's idea of treating Mr. Stewart as a holdover member, but would still not vote until he's duly sworn in. Will that be agreeable to your concern?
I have no choice. I just want to say I've never been to a zoning board of appeal meeting, and I didn't expect to see such chaos.
Apologies.
That's all.
Yeah. Apologies to you and your experience. I ask you to be patient and hear the meeting out because I think as the meeting unfolds, you'll see that this board is very passionate and compassionate about abutters' concerns and the issues. And so I like the idea. There are so many of you here. I'm worried that if we continue or postpone this, I won't get all of you back. And I also like the idea that we're not going to vote tonight. So we'll have everything on the table and out in the open and record it. And we can start all over again if there's a reason to, or we can continue at the next scheduled meeting. So I'm going to ask your indulgence and hope that I'm not offending you. But I will note for the record that if, when we're done, you still have objection, we will continue this hearing and start all over again from scratch. Would that be agreeable? Okay. Is everyone all right with that result?
Sorry, I'm confused about the part where a member who needs to be sworn in would then vote later. Because what's not clear to me is whether that voting will take place, you know, in their office when they review the recording or will it be at a continuation? Maybe that's the wrong word.
No.
A second meeting where we all will be present.
Yes, it will only be at a second meeting where you will all be present. And pardon me for confusing the issue with the recording. That one's off the table right now. We're going to use, we're going to use an abused Rod tonight. We're going to put him on the, put him on the spot.
I'm not sure we should eliminate David because four out of five is easier than four out of four.
Yeah, but I don't want to, I'm hearing from the abutters that we either continue and go forward with the four out of five vote or we use these four out of four with the applicant's permission. And I think that's what the applicant wants and agrees to do. So David is off the table for this particular hearing. And we're going to have four, the vote will have to be four out of four for the applicant to get the variance they've requested or a modification of same after we hear you all and everybody agrees to modify it. But let's hear it out.
She wants to make sure we're going to vote again in an open meeting.
I did. I just confirmed that for her and she was right. You heard me say that. The vote will happen at an open meeting where you're all coming back.
Yeah, I guess I'm confused because, my apologies, but I thought that there were two abutters who wanted to postpone. And I wasn't aware that anyone else had said pro or con regarding to that. And maybe I missed nodding heads or.
I think maybe that's my fault. So two abutters said they wanted to postpone. And we talked it through. And I think, I thought I understood that you're more comfortable getting the mullen alternate out of the picture and using these four. And then I got the impression that you were all right with us, at least opening it up for a hearing, not making any decision tonight and not even closing the hearing tonight. It will get continued. And it will get continued for further hearing and a vote. It will not be voted tonight and it will not be closed tonight. And that means if anyone wants to bring new information, added information or anything, it will still be available to be done.
Thank you. I clarify this briefly. My question is, if it's going to be continued, why don't we just start again in the next few days?
So if we hear, the people that are here hear what they have to say, our answer might be, oh, we kind of like what you're saying, but we want some changes. And this would give them a chance to make those changes. And they would have to come back anyway. So if we don't hear it for a month, a month, and then we tell them, oh, we want some changes, then there's another month before they get an answer.
We frequently ask people, you know, sometimes people want a garage that's 28 feet wide, but that puts them within two feet of their neighbor's property line. And that makes it impossible for them to even really build without stepping on their neighbor's property. And while the current neighbor may be okay with that, we worry about a future neighbor who wouldn't want someone mowing their property so they can mow around their garage, et cetera. So we ask them to do things like, can you live with a 26-foot garage? Can you change, have the architect change the drawing and come back? That, that's the kind of thing we frequently do. We try to listen to neighbors and we try to make sense of things. We're just volunteers. We're just citizen volunteers like you are. So, but we, you know, we've taken the training and we try to do our best.
Also, we haven't really asked the applicant if he felt like extending a couple of weeks is an issue or not.
We did.
He did. We asked him and he answered. Let me, let me make it a little bit simpler because we're getting way off in the weeds right now. This is an application and the advertisement said it was an application to change the lot size. It didn't say how. You don't even know yet, and we don't even know yet, how they want the lot size changed. We know a little more than you only because we have a full presentation in our packets. But that wasn't noticed to you. My feeling is that when you all see what's being asked for and hear the law relative to what they already have and what's being asked for, it's going to be less objectionable overall because they're not looking to make a lot smaller, as far as I can tell. So again, what, what Ms. Howley, Howler said is, we like to hear it. This board likes to hear all the neighbors' concerns and comments. We like to go back to the applicant and say, you just heard your neighbor's concern. Is there any way you can address that and do better? And it allows for everybody to go back to the drawing board and talk about it and negotiate it and, and make it better or not, or not grant it at all or grant it all the way. We won't know that until we hear the presentation. And I'm pretty sure they came with some large-scale photos. And I'd like to see where all the abutters touched their lot and see what the objections are because they're all valid. And my only, my only comment is, it's not going to be any different whether it's tonight or four weeks from tonight because we're not voting, we're not closing the hearing, and these same four people will be the four people that hear it. I'm just deferring to you guys who all came out tonight to hear this and were inconvenienced by your schedules and whatever else to be here tonight. I'm sorry we don't have a quorum or a sworn-in member.
We have a quorum. We just don't have a sworn-in member. But you have.
If, when we're all through, you tell me that you're objecting to the way this was all conducted. Like I said, we'll continue to the regularly scheduled next meeting and we'll make them start all over again. And at that point, we may have the fifth member hearing it. At that point, it may be a four out of five vote because if we have five people sitting, we only need four out of five votes. So I think you get the best of both worlds if you let us go forward tonight. Would that be acceptable? I'm not foreclosing any of your rights. Okay? Does anyone else want to speak in favor of going forward or against it? I'm getting nods, if you don't mind. I'm getting nods from up here. You want to stand up and see them? You're welcome to, that the rest are agreeable to going forward. And like I said, I'm not going to foreclose anybody's rights to say it wasn't the way I wanted it. It wasn't just to start again. So with that, I'm going to ask the applicant to come up, identify as, excuse me. Hey, I'm going to make a couple of comments. The way we operate, the way the board operates is that we open the hearing.
You have to open the hearing first. Did you officially open?
Give him a minute.
I'm going to do, I'm going to do other business first. The way we do this is we open the hearing. We have the applicant present first. We have the board ask the applicant clarifying questions. Then we have every member weigh, every, every abutter, everyone who's here weigh into it and ask questions. And the applicant has to answer your questions. We can then embellish and ask more questions. We go back and forth till everyone's satisfied. However, I have one thing I want to do first because my agenda says this meeting was not the first thing on the agenda. The first thing on the agenda was.
20 minutes.
Yeah. We'll do the minutes last week that were sitting in the way. But I want to do the letter of gratitude that came in. Last week, a letter was sent from the, you know what, last month?
Yeah, well, it was definitely.
Last month, a letter was sent by the applicant for a variance to a sideline setback. And it was a Littleton resident who'd been in town forever and who wanted to stay and age in their, age in place in their home. But they needed a little setback variance in order for them to be able to build on a first-floor bedroom so that they could stay in their home. And the letter that was sent afterwards to Diane Crory, the town clerk, Dear Zoning Board of Appeals, as you know, I presented an application for a variance to the Zoning Board of Appeals on June 12. This matter was of dire importance to my husband and me, given our longevity in Littleton and our hope to remain here for the remainder of our days, which of course we hope will be many. We had never been to a Zoning Board of Appeals hearing, so we did not know what to expect. I am writing to convey to you my deep appreciation for the thoughtfulness with which the hearing was conducted and the degree to which you provided useful information. Littleton is lucky to have such knowledgeable and dedicated volunteer board members. Just wanted to convey our appreciation. Thank you and sincerely. So I wanted my board members to hear that because it was a heartfelt appreciation for what I said. This board tries to be impartial and to hear everybody's side. Now, I'm going to open the hearing. Cheryl, do you want to read it?
I didn't bring my glasses. But I, I can. The Littleton Board of Appeals will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, July 17, 2025, the Littleton Town Office, Shattuck Street, et cetera, to hear the following petition, case at 7:10 PM. We're a little late. Case number 25-977, 16 Elizabeth Street. The petitioner, Charlie Ellis, seeks a variance pursuant to 173-27 to change lot dimensions and other, and such other businesses may come properly before the board.
Okay. Having said that, I'm going to ask the applicant to come forward and present the case. Do you have large plans that you can lay?
I have 11 by 17. That was the largest they were. I could blow them up greater than the scale. Be happy to pass them around or?
The best way to get everybody to see them all at once would be my preference.
Yeah.
How many sets do you have?
One. I'm sorry. I didn't, I thought we might have. Keep going to the screen.
Yeah, I need to, I need to figure out a way. I've got two sets here. Sets here that can be cast around. And you've got a set that you can cast around, right?
Yes.
I hope that these neighbors know the area well enough ourselves. Yes.
Sorry, is that the same as the information that's in case 2025-977? Because there are maps.
On the, on the, oh, online.
Yeah, it helps people.
We got a.
Well, show the, you don't have to show the whole assessor's map. That's confusing.
Do you have this readily up?
Yeah, and pass this out.
Can you share?
This is another one to pass out.
There are these windows sitting here.
I'm going to hang on to mine because I haven't seen this before. I didn't get it.
Oh, you got John Fields?
Yeah, and, and the one you gave me because I already printed my set out.
Oh, good. I may have another, another one I need to. Pass those out.
To the abutters.
Yes.
Yeah, I went online Saturday morning. 6 o'clock, I printed it all out.
Did you pre-schedule or did you take the one that was in front of you?
I have the one that was left in front of me and I'm kind of grumpy because no one.
They are, they have these two there.
When you told me I was online and got them, they weren't sent.
I really think, I really think we shouldn't be doing this right now. I really think you should. The minute you lose hands or run up, you should have started. I think, I think you should let it go.
The town clerk has texted you. She texted me to tell you to look at your.
Thank you. I just received a text from town clerk and it was brought to my attention. I don't, my texts don't, aren't audible. And it's from town, excuse me, from town clerk who says, Mr. Goddard is correct in that Rod Stewart's position is held over legally until he is re-sworn in because it does not expire until his successor is elected and duly appointed. So that takes away a lot of the concerns.
Is she saying I was appointed, but it's not.
But she says you're still legal.
You're still legal and so you're appointed.
You can, you can vote and everything.
You hold over until you're appointed.
But I'm just wondering if I was appointed yet.
No.
No.
Still not. Okay.
But you're legal, but you can vote and you're, you're legal.
Definitely on a radar now.
So we have four out of four. And that's appropriate.
Okay. That makes me a lot more.
And we can stop being concerned and worried. We try really hard, folks, to do the right thing.
Okay.
Okay.
When you folks are ready, we'll all.
We're ready.
Now, well, I'm just wanting to annotate my maps so I know what you're talking about when you're talking. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Bruce Ringwald from Goldsmith Preston Ringwald. I'm here representing Charlie and Ann Lee Ellis, who are the owners of 16 Ellis, 16 Elizabeth Street, 0 Elizabeth Street and 32 Locksley Road. And I'm going to hold this up and walk around, make sure everybody knows. This is 32 Locksley. Locksley is here and this is Elizabeth. That end comes down. This they own. This property is essentially vacant property between the two. And this property down here is where their home is. And this second sheet that you all have is this plan here, which is a survey plan done by Rose Chalk Survey. And it shows that same thing. This is, and I'll show you folks this in just a second. This 32 Locksley Road, 0 Elizabeth. And it has a dotted line in the middle of that. And it has parcels, 56 and 55. And those are going to be numbers that I'm going to be using throughout this meeting. And the one to the north is 56, adjacent to the Locksley Road property. And 55 is the one to the south, which is adjacent to 16 Elizabeth, which is the property at the end of the cul-de-sac. Okay? Does everybody over here, can we understand, do you see what I'm talking about? Do you folks all understand what I'm talking about here? So vacant properties owned by Charlie Ellis as well. All, all four of these properties are owned by Charlie Ellis.
Can you do it for us, please?
Yes, I would be more than happy to. So again, starting here at the top, Locksley Road is here. Elizabeth Street is here. 32 is here. And 0 Elizabeth is this parcel in between. This plan shows a septic system on it and the proposed garage. And then 16 Elizabeth is at the end of the cul-de-sac.
And who owns 16 Elizabeth?
All four of these parcels, all three of these parcels are owned by.
Mr. Ellis. And, and there's houses on two of them?
There's houses on the Locksley and on 16 Elizabeth.
Okay.
Okay. This is a survey done by Rose Chalk. This is a survey done by Rose Chalk several years ago that shows all of that same thing. Locksley is here, 32 Locksley with an existing house. The vacant land in between shown as parts as lots 55 to the south and 56 to the north. These lots are part of the original subdivision of land way back when.
55?
55 is right there. 56 is right here. And if you, right under your finger there. And I gotta get you a pair of readers out of my car if you'd like.
No, that's all right. Thank you. I'm not that, quite that old yet.
Well, my wife is young and she has readers as well.
I know, I needed mine.
Mine I have to wear all the time. I see it. Do you see that?
55 currently has a septic system on it.
56 currently has a septic system.
56 has a septic system.
So all that work that...
So if I can make a, if you want to make a little note, you can dash the line across here.
So all that digging that's taken place is for a septic system and a garage?
The septic system is in. So this is, I'll get to that in a second. Write 56 there and write 55 there.
Okay.
The years are reversed.
And you, and they own, currently own all four?
55 is down here, 56 is up.
Where is the septic system for Elizabeth?
On the front of the yard of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here, mine's a little bit bigger.
I got it, I got it, I got it.
Okay? Okay. The applicants wish to build a garage for storage. Their property where they reside at 16 Elizabeth Street at the end of the cul-de-sac, where it looks as a very large lot. A good percentage of that lot, that which is off the end of the cul-de-sac into the south, is wetlands. The drainage from Florence Street and the budding streets to the south actually drain onto that parcel. And there is a drain pipe, a 15-inch drain pipe, extends about 40 feet into their lot, which picks up the drainage from Florence Street and those streets to the south and discharges it through that pipe into the drainage system within Elizabeth Street and then on into the town drainage. So that portion of that lot, that you look at that plan and say, see all that vacant land on there, is not buildable because it is in the wetlands. The goal is for the applicants to build a storage garage. A garage that they can store equipment and vehicles and materials in. The, um, the goal is to build that on that southern portion of that land that they own in the middle, known as Lot 55, from the original subdivision plan and that plan which I just showed you, the survey plan from Rose Land Surveying. Several years ago, there was a need to upgrade the septic system at 32 Locksley Road. And when they did that, there was not the space because the septic system was to the rear of the house on Locksley. And there was not the space to upgrade there. They upgraded on the northern portion of what's known as 0 Elizabeth or Lot 56. If you were to combine those two parcels, 0 Elizabeth, which is Lot 55 and 56, with 32 Locksley as one, it still does not meet the requirement of 40,000 square feet. It's shy of the 40,000 square feet. The reason that we're here before you this evening is because under the zoning bylaw, and let me get my appropriate section, 173-27, that is the, wants you to limit and not make a nonconformity more nonconformant. Now, the nonconformity is that we have 32 Locksley as its own lot and it's recently gotten use of the abutting land by the same owners for their septic system. Now, to add more confusion to an already slightly confusing issue, and I'm trying to keep it as straight as possible. Elizabeth Street itself in 1968 was before the then-town annual town meeting to be accepted under Article 10 as a townway. It was voted upon to become a townway, but it was never recorded as a townway.
So it doesn't count.
Now, to make things more interesting, if you notice on those plans that I've handed out, it shows a right-of-way that goes right to a stone wall and would eventually connect over to Edsel Street on a paper street known as Linda Street. Because that parcel on the other side of the wall also has wetlands. The street was never continued. It was a paper street that was never built. And Elizabeth Street was built as a cul-de-sac, a paved cul-de-sac for a turnaround for emergency vehicles, et cetera. And that layout of that cul-de-sac is outside of and beyond the extents of the original 40-foot layout. So the paved cul-de-sac and right-of-way that the public uses today is on the Ellis's property both north and south of the right-of-way.
Is that what the small circle is?
You gotta wait, you gotta write your questions.
There's several small circles. So there is... No, those I have no idea why those were put on this plan. But this is the actual pavement edge, which is also shown here. This is the actual pavement edge that comes around and then for some reason they didn't continue that there.
No, Bruce, I'm, I'm gonna ask you to please complete your presentation and then the board will go back and ask questions. Thank you.
Glad to show you all that momentarily.
Yep.
To that end, the Ellis's have offered to deed, if necessary, the portions of the street which are on their property to the town. To that end, I have met with the town highway director, Steve Jannell, and reviewed this with him. And he has, you know, he said he'd take it under advisement and he'd take a look at it. And he was pleased to know that we could do that. Now, under Mass General Law, when a road is not an accepted way, the abutters on either side of the road own, technically own to the center line of the road. And from that standpoint, this parcel, 0 Elizabeth Street, is an immediate abutter to the Ellis's property at 16 Elizabeth Street. What we propose to do is create a right-of-way that encompasses the full, the fullness of the pavement with the necessary shouldering and space that a right-of-way typically does, which would allow for a physical ownership of land, not center line of right-of-way, from connecting from 16 Ellis along the stone wall to the property on the other side of the road. Our proposal then would be to divide 0 Elizabeth into Lot 55 and 56, as shown on the original subdivision land, to provide upland land connecting to 16 Elizabeth to become space where he could build his storage barn slash garage. And the northern portion, Lot 56, would be annexed to 32 Locksley officially because its septic system resides on that. It is our opinion, as representatives of the applicant, that under the state guidelines for a variance, a variance could only be granted if there is a literal hardship. And that literal hardship does not have to be financial, but could it be a hardship? And the hardship here in this case is that they have no space on... There we go. They have no space on their property at 16 Elizabeth to construct said storage facility due to the slope, topography, and soils on those properties. Other steps of the hardship requirements under the four items for a variance that the, because it's, the slope and the topography and the soils being hydroic soils, we have a, a large wetland area there, which is part of the town's drainage system for addressing the drainage from the streets to the south to the land area to the north. It is our further understanding of these things that most of these lots in this immediate neighborhood are all substandard lots. Not all, are mostly substandard sized lots, being that they're less than 40,000 square feet and many of them less than 150 feet of frontage. And that the, um, this board, if they agree, the granting of that would not be a degradation from the intent and purpose of the bylaw and it would not create an impact, a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood. Further, I offer to the board the option that this could be done by way of a special permit. Should we be able to make this connection of the property, then it would be this huge parcel of land that is all one parcel by ownership of, of the same ownership. And we would be dividing it in the same manner as proposed to you. And if it pleases the board, I'd like to show the, um, the abutters that are here, how the road is across the right-of-way line.
Please.
So here is Locksley and 16. And this is Elizabeth right out, right of this 40-foot lane. This is the actual edge of the pavement that crosses on the northern side, outside of the right-of-way and on the southern side, outside of the right-of-way. This is wetlands that we had a portion of delineated. This is all wetland down here and there's a 15-inch drainage pipe here that connects into the street, into the town drainage. And that is all shown here as well on this plan of that. I don't know what those circles were. They're not anything that was proposed at this point in time.
I thought that was the existing.
Excuse me?
Is that the existing cul-de-sac?
No. The existing cul-de-sac is this dashed line in here. Right, which is the same, which is shown right here. Does that make sense? This is the same, this line, this line right in here is the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
Okay? So, sorry, I don't have a big plan. Usually I take a family to the beach. So this is the actual pavement of the cul-de-sac. It's outside of the right-of-way. And the right-of-way is drawn, this abutter, this abutter, on to the center line of the road. And so from here to here, all this land that is connected is one. And we're trying to divide this land across here, which is this actual division land here. So they can build, they can build a barn, garage here and the septic in this can go with this house here. Does that make sense?
Does the septic already exist?
Yes, it does. It already exists right here.
Okay, so, so... The Ellis's aren't looking to put another septic system in there.
No. They have a septic system for their house in front of their house. This is a septic system for this house that they own up here. They wish to divide this like this and this can go here and this can go...
So is it a garage or a barn?
If I can, excuse me, I just need to stop you one minute, please. I need you to identify who you are and ask questions through the chair so that the recorder can get everything and write it all down. And so we sent him around to show you the picture. If you could hold your questions until it goes through the chair and everyone gets to hear them at the same time, including my transcriber. Thank you very much.
Sorry, I'm...
Yeah, you know better.
I know better. I apologize. Been doing it a couple of days.
All right. Would you show us what you just showed then?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Um, so this is Elizabeth Street and the pavement comes out to, on the north side here and to the 0 Elizabeth and also on the south side into 16. And it comes back around. And this is some of the wetlands that we delineated because we were trying to make certain that this proposed garage would be outside of the 100-foot buffer because we had issues, not in shrewd conservation, we had no issue. There is a pipe here that connects and drains this, these roads from Florence down here, from a low spot into here and then into the drainage in Elizabeth Street. And that is all the same, which is shown here. And this is the line, pardon me, this is the line of the, of the road, the same as what is shown on the plan by GPR.
Thank you.
Okay?
Okay.
I do have a copy of the original subdivision plan that was part of the submission and it does show that 15-inch drain line on it, if there's any question relative to that. So with that, I close my presentation to the board and I await any questions you may have.
Okay, we start with the board questions and then we'll go to the abutter and, uh, and interested party questions. So I'm gonna start with you, Rod, because I threw you under the bus and you've come out without a scratch.
Okay, just to try to understand, you want to split what you're referring to as 0 Elizabeth and attach one half of it with the septic system to the Locksley address and the rest to Charlie Ellis's lot?
That's two different lots.
That's 100% correct.
Yeah, okay.
But it's two different lots, correct, Rod?
My question?
It would, it would make, out of the currently three lots technically shown on the assessor's map now, the 0 Elizabeth, the bigger piece in the middle, is made up of two lots from the original subdivision of the land.
56 and 55.
56 and 55. So we would split along those, we would split it along that original line.
Okay.
Which is the dotted thing?
Right. So you're essentially bringing it in conformance with the original zoning.
Um, not, I don't think that was an accurate statement. He's not bringing it in conformance with the original plan, which was four separate lots. He's going to bring it into a two-lot.
That is correct.
Right, but I mean, the one lot's gonna be the same as what's shown on the assessor's map.
All four lot, okay, all right.
Yeah, and, and then they'll be combined. Now, we haven't talked anything about the garage and the garage setback.
No, can we, let's address the land first.
Let's get through this first and then we'll do the garage and the setback.
If we're going to do the garage, yeah. Can I go?
Yes.
How big is Lot 55?
Lot 55?
Does it fall under the new state guidelines as being able to be separated by right?
I'm not totally aware of the new state guidelines, but yes, I believe it is because Lot 55 is 11,012 square feet. Lot 56 is 15,284. And they both have roughly 100 feet plus of frontage.
So the new state guidelines that were signed in recently, and I'm aware of this as a real estate broker, allow, allow the owner of lots that have been forcibly combined by the state to be divided again. Allow them to be called separate lots as long as they're 5,000 square feet.
Okay. I'm, I'm unaware of that. Thank you very much. I'll, I'll have to look that one up.
So, I don't think we can say no.
No, that's not what they're doing, though. They're, they're not here before us to build... They're not here before us to unmerge the lot to put a building on it. It's a totally different application.
100% correct.
Yes, we can say no. Yes, we can say no.
Yes, you can say no and, and...
But they can go back and put two more houses in between the two.
No, 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 I can't because...
You have to get septic permits.
You have to do septic and everything else.
Yes, we can say no to this application.
The other issue here, and the big issue, is that the reason we'd want to combine what's known as 55, the southern half of 0 Elizabeth Street, to 16 is because if I had 55 by itself, just sitting there by itself, I cannot build a garage on it. Because the garage is an accessory structure to a primary residence. And so the only way that I can build a garage on it, or the applicant can build a garage on it, is as if it is a considered part of his property.
I guess my, I guess my point...
Do you want to merge it to, onto 16?
Yeah.
My point is, I guess, what I'm trying to say, is if he was here saying he was unmerging the properties, which he can do by right according to the law the state has put in, he was unmerging the properties, then if he could get a septic system, he could build a house there.
If and then all the other offsets, et cetera.
He does not have to meet offsets, not with a grandfathered lot.
Anyway, that's not what we're here for.
So I, I want to point out that that's, that's, that would certainly be a, with the new state laws, certainly be a possibility. But what you want to do is you want to take this, how many, 11,000, 8,000 square feet?
11,000 square... Eleven thousand square feet.
And you want to add it to the house, so the house lot, so he can build a garage and we're going to have to deal with the issue of a garage being in forward of the main dwelling. But.
So, not, not now.
But not now.
Right.
So you want to just take that eight thousand square feet and add it to the house.
That's correct.
Eleven plus.
Eleven thousand. And you leave the septic system and the other one with the other one.
That's correct. And there'd be no plumbing in the, in the garage that we're building. And, and the, and the numbers may be slightly smaller because I'm going to offer to the town the land to cover the right-of-way and the exit, the physical paved way that is on their property.
I, I understand. It's a little.
No, I, I understand exactly what you're saying.
I'm going to ask you to do me one big favor for this group and then I'm going to go to the people assembled here and ask their questions. Do you have a picture of this plan where, in a, in a, any color pen or highlighter or a crayon where you could just draw what the resulting two lots are going to look like, please?
Yes.
I think that would be easier for everyone to take a look at. And while we're doing that, whoever wants to raise your hand and I'll go around the room and call people who are here, who would like to speak for or against this, or ask any questions. We're going to go around more than once, so have more than one chance. Yes?
Is this garage going to be of commercial use or is it just going to be privately?
Could I just ask you to identify yourself for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm Mitchell's mom.
Mitchell's.
Mitchell.
I'm like your puppy.
Oh. And can you tell me your name, please?
Robin Karen.
Robin Karen.
And where do you live?
Fifty-eight Edsel Road.
And I just want to ID you on my plan so I have it in my head. Fifty-eight Edsel is.
Where?
Not on this picture, right?
It's on the other side of the wetlands.
Yeah.
Well, it must just be outside.
The jungle, as we call it.
We've always called it that. Oh, I see Edsel now. And you were Karen on?
It's cron, it's croning, it's under croning, probably.
Oh, there it is, okay. So this is Karen, okay. And that's fifty-eight. Does anyone else want to see where this is this one?
Yeah, got it.
Okay. Now go ahead and ask the question.
Okay. I just wanted to know if it was going to be of commercial use or private use. Is it going to be just their cars and storage for themselves personally? Or is it going to be?
Can I have Mr. Ellis's, please?
Yeah, sure. Identify yourself for the record.
Charlie Ellis, you have any here at the? No.
No, they will pick you up.
It's going to be private. I have two very small sports cars that will be in there and I'd like to set up my table saw. I'd like to do some birdhouses. We're going to plant some box gardens, some apple trees, and try to lighten the impact on the, on the street. And no water and no septic.
Thank you.
Next question?
Do you want any questions or you want to see the picture?
Who wants to see the picture?
This will be in the lot line. This will become one lot. This will become another lot.
Do you have a different color pen?
New red.
I just want you to do this. I want you to do this outline.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
The whole thing's going to look like both of them, okay?
Got you, got you.
All right, next, please. I can't see the handout.
Any other questions?
I'm, I'll go.
Go ahead.
Can I go out in sixty-two Edsel Road, right next to these guys? I just want to know, are people going to be, like, they walk their dogs through the path, you know, when they come out on Elizabeth? Is that going to, are you guys combining your property with that property so, or are people going to be able to get out?
Well, they always have.
Yeah, they, yeah, so that's how it stays.
We're not changing, yeah, we're not changing any.
So you're just, you're losing some of the cul-de-sac? You're pushing the cul-de-sac out, like?
Cul-de-sac will stay as it is. It'll just, it's right now not within the right-of-way.
Right. That's the thing, we're, the town is losing the right-of-way and we're going to deed it back to them so that they can.
So what does this have to do with us?
Naturally.
How does it affect our property?
So, can I ask you, can I ask you a question? I just heard you say people walk their dogs through.
The Ellis's property.
Whatever, well, it's not really, yes and no, it isn't the Ellis's property. Something you all need to know about the, the law of what is called paper streets. If a street is depicted on a plan of land and recorded at the registry of deeds, as these streets were in the olden days when this was made up before zoning, Linda Street and what looks like the Elizabeth Street continuation all the way up to Locksleya, whether or not it's a public way, it's always a way to which the public has a right of access because it's depicted on a plan. And so that's, if the town didn't take it over, which Bruce said they didn't, they voted it, but then they didn't take it, it remains as a public way. So the fact that the Ellis's on both sides of Elizabeth at that point still leaves them owning right to the midpoint on both sides, but always subject to the right-of-way of others to walk across it, okay? Which means they can't put structures under, on it, over it, or block it. So when you say you've been walking your dogs over there or somebody has and you hope that that continues, they can't stop that in whatever they do, okay? I hope that answered that question.
Yeah, it's kind of going, showing from Florence Street. They, they cut over Florence Street and cut through right to their property, right to where they live. Right, that's where they get out, they come on, yeah, or.
So that's walking across their property and not the right-of-way and as long as the Ellis's are still willing to let you do that.
Well, it's the wetland. It's the wetland, it's where the.
The town, town lot.
Yes, the town lot.
Oh, the town lot.
I just wanted to know if the exit was still going to be open on Elizabeth.
I'm not going to close it, I'm not going to move it.
Yeah, it's not up to us, it's up to the town to do that. We, as far as we're concerned, we don't care. But there isn't no trespassing sign there on our side. I don't.
The town put that up.
But that, I mean, that answers the question. What Bruce said is accurate. You would still have a right to walk in that paper street. And if you're not doing that now, you're walking a little north or a little south of it and they don't mind, they can continue to let you do that too.
Can I charge money for that?
Yes. Yes, you do not have to let people walk on, not in the right-of-way on your property.
They've been doing it since, since Noah.
Since Noah.
So there's always going to be a right-of-way there, so that's.
It's a private way to which the public has a right of access. They cannot impede the access over that paper street.
They do.
Right. And because they own to the center line on each side, I'm not really troubled, as Cheryl said, by the, the request to merge the lots in this way. What's before us, don't lose sight of the fact, is that by merging these lots, technically they're taking a non-conforming lot and making it more non-conforming. And that is not supposed to be allowed by our bylaw. But in practicality, what they're doing is taking two non-conforming lots and adding a little bit to each to make both lots a little more conforming. So we've done this before in, in the Lake area, so it's not a huge violation or derogation from the intent of the zoning bylaw. We are getting two better lots out of it, I think.
And when they merge Fifty-Five with Sixteen Elizabeth, that will be conforming because that's going to make it to about sixty-nine thousand square feet.
That is correct.
So that, that lot will.
They'll actually end up with one conforming, yeah.
And the other one is close, but then, and since it's got a septic system on it already, it kind of makes sense.
Okay, now.
Other concerns?
I would like to speak to the ladies up front because you had some misgivings and I want to know how you are related to the property. Where's your property, please? Yes, go.
Thirty-five Florence Street. The map's wrong.
What?
The map is incorrect.
Oh.
Or two properties.
Okay.
So pardon me for interrupting.
The map probably has the parcel number, not the street number.
Yeah, those, this map has parcel numbers on it.
The names are wrong. Can you show me Florence where she's pointing?
This is Florence.
I'm not going to. So, firing year thirty-five.
So, here's Florence, right here?
For the Ellis's, they're showing you.
This is, this is the Ellis's lot here.
Twenty-two.
This is town land. This is the one you want to divide. This is Locksley.
So if, if you're looking at this, this plan, those aren't, those aren't street numbers, those are lot numbers that you'd find on your property tax bill, but not, it's a lot number.
Well, is this twenty-two?
If that's true, the names are still wrong.
Yeah, what is your name?
It shifted two lots.
I don't see your name going wrong.
Yeah, what is, what is your name in the paper?
Gorski. G O R S K I.
I'm sorry, two talking at once and I didn't hear you.
Gorski.
Gorski. And your first name?
Irene.
And your street number again?
Thirty-five.
Florence.
Yep.
Irene, can you come up or I'll look down to you? I want to see which lot is yours from the map.
It's listed. Or the names are incorrect.
Sorry. This is a bigger measure of all that. This is the assessor's. So this is Elizabeth Street and this is Ellis's house here. This is Florence. Okay? And, and that's correct. This is where it's here.
Oh, by the way.
Where you live relative to Laura, Martin, or Rita?
I'm right, if you walk straight here. Part of your.
This is you? This is you? And where?
That's Irene. She says, of course. Yeah, thirty-five.
What, what lot number are you at, Bruce, for her?
I believe forty-eight. And which one is yours, Matt?
Irene, who was the owner before you? Do you know that name?
Is she right there?
Who was the owner before us?
Yes.
It's been for many years.
And do you know the size of your lot? Are you one of those lots or two lots together?
She's one.
Just one lot.
Point two four.
So she's.
She is forty-eight, parcel forty-eight.
On Florence.
On Florence.
Yeah, and that's where to the lot, where's, where's his?
And this is his, so his house is right here.
Oh, you're backed right up to that. You're backed right up to this lot in question, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, I'm sorry, did you catch your name?
Tomlinson.
Tomlinson, she lives here at parcel forty-seven.
And you're backed up.
On the ro, the Rose map or whatever it is, it says parcel thirty.
On the Rose map?
Rose land.
Yep, yep.
Survey map.
And Ms. Tomlinson, what's your first name?
Christine with a F.
Okay, just don't go too fast for me, I'm going to annotate this because I have to write the decision and I want to make sure I have everybody right. So Christine Tomlinson.
So again, the names shown are shifted two houses down.
Which is now a formerly Parsons. And this is Irene here, or?
That's correct.
Did you show her this one and double-check that?
I, I will, right now.
Please go do that because I think that makes me happy that I see where they bought this property and it also enables me to say to them.
Let me double-check.
Double-check that you're right.
So, here on the assessor's map.
Okay, did you change?
No. This is where we decided that you lived. And this is where we decided that you lived. Okay, and I'm going to show you that same thing on a different plan now. This is the Boston survey plan. This would be where you live and this would be where you live.
Let's keep.
That has been confirmed.
Keep, keep that in front of them for a minute and I just want to show them that. This is the house of Ellis.
This is right here, their house.
And that picture that you're seeing right now is not going to change at all. The house stays where it is. He's not putting anything closer to your lot lines in any way. He's not putting any structures in that backyard that will impede your view or create drainage issues. No excavation is going on there. Where the garage is being proposed is way up here. And what I heard Bruce say in the beginning is that the drainage runs from Lawrence down to Elizabeth, northerly.
The drain runs north.
So even, even that garage excavation should not be, as far as I can see, should not be sending you into a worry that drainage is going to come in an opposite direction and flow uphill to you.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Except that I have one niece that was able to make water flow uphill at the beach one day.
Because I understand it. I mean, it's probably not my turn, so I'll shut up if.
No, I'm going to let, and we want Ms. Gorski finishing, then I'll call on you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I was concerned about drainage, as was Christine.
And we can, we can talk more about that.
Wetland situation.
So if, if you're aware when you're at your property, if you were to go to the north towards here, it's essentially going downhill.
Okay.
All right? When you go to the end of your street, you're like up high and you can see off the stuff you're up, it's, it's misleading when you look at it in two-dimensional, but it is, it's, it's downhill. The water's, drainage is flowing to the north.
Are you satisfied with your questions right now? We'll come back if you want to. Okay, now, Ms. Tomlinson.
Thank you. A couple of things, and one is, yes, I am here because of the drainage concerns. My property was originally a cow pond. So that parcel that you see there in the center, the Florence screenshot there, snapshot, is the lowest elevation in that particular area, as I understand it. There is a stream and we've talked about the culvert and the pipe, fifteen-inch pipe that goes back there. If the town does not keep it clear, it backs up into my property. And I do get water and sometimes coming into my house. So I know we've talked about it and it was very nice, I had an opportunity to speak with Charlie this afternoon at the property, so I have an understanding of, I think, what is being discussed for the variances. But when I talk to highway department folks or whatever, if they're dredging or what, my understanding is that the water table is rising. So while we might have this idea that things run from high to low, if the water table itself is rising, that changes the dynamic a bit. So my question, I think from the engineering standpoint, and it's unclear to me whether we're just talking about the land swap, which I think I understand, but yes, I have concerns because of a twenty-four by forty-foot slab, how does that change drainage when the corner of that slab, I'm going to say it's probably the southwest corner, is also part of the wetlands and the drainage? And there's a septic tank that's to the north of it for the property Zero Locksley or it was, whatever we're calling that. So how does that all work together? What I did not see in the document was anything addressing those concerns. There is, just my, just my final comment is the talk about deeding the land to the town, which Charlie, I believe you explained to me would provide access for that dredging. But that hasn't happened yet. So how does someone such as me, who's, would be impacted probably the most, should there be water issues? So, you know, know that that's not going to happen or that we can prevent it.
So the applicant presented as if we're talking about two different applications here, the first being the lot split. Your concerns are very, very valid and interesting to all of us. One of the ways that you can be protected is that we can condition our variances. And if the condition of the variance has something to do with making sure that the drainage features and structures are conveyed to the town as a condition of this allowance, we can do that. I'm not saying we will, I'm saying we can.
I just wanted to mention I've also had problems with water. I have a sub-pump.
Yeah.
And used intermittently, but I do have water in my yard at times, heavy rains.
I've got to say, there's nothing worse than standing water in your home. I, I'm, that and diesel engines starting in the morning too early, but...
He isn't going, he isn't going to have water in that building. So he will not be adding any, any fluid there.
I just wanted to add on to Christine's concerns.
I, I think that I heard, and we're not up to any of it, but what I heard is the displacement of the land from the excavation of a garage and then covering what now is permeable surface with impermeable surface. It has nothing to do with what, whether or not there's plumbing in the building, and I heard that.
Okay. May I address that as well?
Please.
We have several different things we can do with that. One is that as you come down Elizabeth from Locksley, you're going uphill. So it drains towards Locksley. There's also a catch basin within the road, right about where we're going to run this property line up to. Also, what we can do, and the board can condition it, is that we create a drip edge on the eve sides of the building. So as the roof comes down and the water drips in, if we put a stone drip edge, essentially eighteen inches wide and about eight to twelve inches deep of crushed stone, or piece stone, that'll absorb the typical rainstorm. So have that go into the ground and then overland flow would go, from that would go overland to that catch basin, which would go in the opposite direction. The wetland issue, we've delineated the wetlands and we're over a hundred feet. I think we're a hundred and twenty feet, if memory serves me right, away from that. We've put the erosion control at that hundred-foot level so that even during construction, there would be no erosion or any sediment going back towards the cul-de-sac or towards that low portion of the Ellis's lot that it lets you.
Thank you. Your mention of the drip basis, I believe?
Drip edge, yeah.
Drip edge, thank you. Right to mind, I was reading something in one of the maps about like...
Doesn't mean the building.
I'm going to get the right name. People spell it differently. But it, it looks like one of those straw...
No, that's a straw wattle.
Yes, and again, an issue of maintenance. The idea of that, as I understood, was to prevent erosion and maybe water as well. But those need to be maintained. They don't last very long.
Chairman, I address the straw wattle.
Yes, please do.
The straw wattle is a temporary use. That only is there while they're constructing the building. When you, to put in a building, you have to have a four-foot frost wall. And they have to dig for that foundation, so they have to expose earth. And so the straw wattle's purpose is to prevent any sediment from a heavy rainstorm heading towards the wetlands or towards the cul-de-sac. So that just stops it from that standpoint. Once, once the foundation is in and backfilled and the land is graded off again and stabilized with grass, or I think he's planning to plant some trees, then the straw wattle disappears. It's only a temporary use.
Thank you, okay. And I think I'm done with my questions, so I'd want clarification. I think I'm still hearing that there might be some water flowing in the opposite direction of the landscape, which would be from the garage side of the property to that catch basin.
Which, the catch basin, which is towards Locksley.
Okay, then we're, I'm thinking, the thing in the center of the cul-de-sac.
No, no, that, that is a drain manhole. It has a solid cover.
Yeah.
That's a drain manhole. Catch basin is typically square and it has a number of holes within it. And that allows water to go into it.
That's further downstream.
That's further downstream. The, the drain manhole is where the culvert pipe, that fifteen-inch pipe goes into, and that allows that water to flow into the system.
Thank you.
Bruce, thank you for your explanations. And I noticed that even people who have a little more experience with this than you are giving him wrapped attention because they're learning something from him as well. So thank you for your questions. I just want to clarify one thing you said. The waddle does not disappear. It gets taken out and eliminated.
That's correct.
By the contractor.
That's right. The waddle, the waddle is removed. It's a temporary, temporary, I mean, it's removed.
Please. Identifying for the record first.
Bruce Lambert from fifty-two Etsel.
Thank you.
And while on the subject of water flow, I know a few of the neighbors along Etsel Road recently never had water in their basements. Started to have water in their basements. I don't know if it was from a house that was built on the street or how. But it seems like if anything happens over there, as far as groundwater, we're worried about it mitigating over and affecting our property. Whether it's a four-foot frost wall that you dig in the ground, will that stop the flow of groundwater underneath? It's more of a, we're just trying to be sure that the groundwater mitigation works. Because I don't have water in my basement.
I don't blame you. I lived in an eighteen-hundreds house for a long time. I totally can relate.
But we have people on the street that have never had water in forty years, all of a sudden had it.
As this lady has mentioned, groundwater in many areas, we're finding groundwater higher today than we did in pass. The installation of the frost wall shouldn't have any impact on groundwater flow. Water seeks its own level, even in soil. So if we put a frost wall out in the ground and if it's in that groundwater area, the water's still going to flow around it and do what it does. And the soils in that neighborhood, as you probably know, are fairly dense. They're more of a glacier till than a gravel and sand. And so the water flows very slowly.
So on one of the maps, it does delineate a wetland area which goes right through my backyard, your backyard. We're concerned about displacement of that water coming in.
No, shouldn't be any displacement from that.
Can you guarantee that?
There are not too many guarantees except for taxes and death in my book. But from a scientific standpoint, from what we're doing, and especially if we put in the infiltration trenches, the drip edge on either side of the eve, the surface water, the, or the runoff water from rain will still have the same ability of getting into the ground. And the water still has the ability to flow to the low areas.
Is there going to be any type of grade changes, elevation changes, stay as-is?
They're going to be building that grade.
Madam Chairwoman, just a question.
Yeah, one, one moment, please, Ms. Scotty.
I would gently point out that Littleton is getting wetter. I live over on Tadaway and there's what used to be a beautiful forest, right on the corner, there's a, where Brown's woods are, there's a corner and across the street from it, what used to be a wonderful forest that I ran through and played in as a child is now a swamp. I grew up, I live in the house I grew up in. My parents never once had water in their basement. I have had as much as four inches of water in my basement. It is, you may, the water table may continue to rise in your area and have absolutely nothing to do with this garage at all. I can't imagine how this garage would, having had the explanation, how this garage could possibly impact in a negative way your water table. But that, I, we also can't guarantee that the water table's not continuing to rise there because it is continuing to rise in my neighborhood without someone else building anything. So it is unfortunate and there has, you know, town sewage could help with that. All kinds of things could help with that. A double-edged sword in the lake area because it will make a lot of lots more buildable, but it would also help alleviate a lot of the wetland problems.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Scotty.
I just wanted to ask, are you cutting any more trees down? I know you said you wanted to plant some trees. That you're cutting the trees down is what scares me back there because that, and they're not drinking the water, so...
No, we, we have a lot. But a lot of that was scrubbed from when the canes were there. We had three maples that came down simply because maples end of time, end of cycle. So we actually bought apple trees. We'll start with three and we're going to try to bring, because that whole area at one time was orchard, as you know. So we're going to try to bring some of the, some of that back. We actually have one apple tree, it's probably a hundred years old on the property now, so. I'm going to try and do that. Might even try peaches, but we'll see.
A couple of questions from me, please. I'm trying to envision how we document that we will end up with two separate lots that are no longer further subdividable. And we're not merging by law, we're merging by decision today if we allow this. And I want to be sure that I have two separate buildable lots and not one parcel with two lots and one parcel with two lots. And maybe that means that you have to file an eighty-one L when we're all done?
I was going to say we probably, we have to file an eighty-one P.
Eighty-one P is what I, I was meant.
It's all right. It gets late. An eighty-one P and a, and our plan approval that required would be necessary to be filed with the planning board for endorsement upon having this decision allowing for that to occur.
And you are the owner of all four now, the Ellis's? But I understand a relative or a family member lives in the northerly lot?
Our son.
Your son.
No, it's a Locksley Street.
Oh, wait, Locksley Street.
Locksley Street. Who, your daughter?
Yeah.
Yeah. So would you be all right with that if the decision was conditioned on there being an eighty-one P plan filed where this results in two lots? And we eliminate any possibility that the state new statute is implemented to further subdivide anything into an unbuildable lot?
So recently, when we put the septic system in, the engineers decided where it was going to go. We, we had no say in that with the Board of Health. And so what transpired with that is that we had to do a deed restriction that, that set for that house. And we also had to co-mingle those two lots legally so that they couldn't be divided because the septic system has to go with that house. So that, that's kind of already been done with the, the lot with the septic system in it. The other lot, I mean, I, I don't remember I'm doing that, Jerry, I mean, but there's no way you could, couldn't build a house with so much wetland, you just couldn't do it.
I hear you, but I think Cheryl's point is well taken. The new statute that was enacted by the governor is that lots that would otherwise have merged due to the doctrine of merger.
Right.
Can be unattached, if you will. And as long as you, I think it's seventy-five hundred square feet on that, on that particular statute. Five is the old fa, is the very old one.
Okay.
And that requires that they never have merged.
So that's a deep restriction.
Seventy-five hundred square foot lot. It wouldn't be a deep restriction. What I'd have Bruce do is, is create a lot and, and file it on record so that when and if you go to sell, you're selling to the next owner as one lot.
Yeah.
And not a lot that can be unmerged later and somebody take the garage down and put a house on it.
You do, you do lose value that way because right now that lot could be divided. And someday if septic ever goes down there, then that house could be built there.
I understand that, but it's never been our intentions. I'm fine putting the restriction on it for the variance, that's fine.
The next thing I want to ask you about is the construction of the garage because in this hearing I heard a couple of members comment that it looks like the garage is too close to the lot line. So is that before us tonight or can we make it before us?
The garage being too close to the lot line? I think it meets all the setbacks, as shown.
No, I didn't, someone said it was too close. I was talking about past decisions.
No, you were saying, you were saying, someone here said this proposed garage was too close. Maybe it was of the little plant I was looking at. And the other person said the garage can't be front of the house, but it's not really in front of, forward of the house.
Well, if this is, if, huh.
Because what he just did for me is he drew me the new lot. Well, this is...
This is, this is this one and this would be the other one.
Yeah. So this is now the lot.
Correct. Goes back here.
You don't think we need to give him a special permit or a variance to build that? I mean, it's all setbacks. To build that there, I looked at it as from the road being in front of the house. I mean, anyway you come down this road, it's in front of this house. It's not behind, it's set before it. I mean, it, it's typical.
If you took this and, and stretched the road out and this came over like that.
It is typical of the reason we give a variance or a special permit for this because the lot shape and typography of this doesn't allow for it to be anywhere else. I'm, I'm not, but I am saying...
I have no problem having that added on as, as a binding.
But on the other hand, I do believe while it meets all the setbacks, if we make this one lot, anyway you look at it, coming down that road, it is in front of the house.
You come to it before the house?
On the road.
Along the road.
Yeah, but that's not...
So I mean, I have no, I, I, I just want to make sure that we cover the bases.
I appreciate that.
If we're going to give permission for this, then we need to cover that base and give that permission.
I, I have no problem with that being added into a decision.
Except I need you to find it for me in the bottom lot because...
Because I don't remember where it is.
And I need, I need to run out to car and get my glasses for you and make me read that.
One second, I don't want you to read it.
Do you want me to run on grandma?
No, I don't want you to read it. I want you, accessory use, is there an article?
No, where we're talking, when it's not accessory use. It's a, it's part of the setbacks where accessory building cannot, you know, a garage cannot be in front of a house. Cannot, the front of the garage cannot be in forward of the house.
Yeah, last time I went looking for it, I couldn't find it, so...
I think that's if it's close to the house or attached to the house, it shouldn't be forward.
No, that's different setback. It's not supposed to be forward.
But that would be forward of the house potentially. This is so far, is actually removed from the house. I wouldn't even think it applied.
And they're talking about along the frontage and the frontage on this one is here. I see what you're saying about you thinking that it looks like it's forward. And it probably wouldn't hurt, you know, what we could do is we could add it in the conditions because we don't really have to...
I can run and get my glasses and find it.
I can scan it while you're running your glasses, too.
Sorry, folks.
I can get it to come up in here.
I want to also ask about, that would be great if you've got some glasses to look at that. I want to find that.
Do you just need readers?
These are readers.
What are they?
At least two hundred.
I think they'll be... And you still run seventy-five.
Two hundred?
Two hundred gives you a little bit clearer.
Was it? It's become magnet light, bud.
Wait, do you hit seven?
I just hit sixty-five. I'm not looking forward to anything else.
Well, there's only one other option.
Have it the good time at sixty-five, which is made in Medicare while we're still...
No, I, my memory says there's your accessory building and it does not say it can't be forward of the house. But my memory is that you're thinking of the time that we had somebody whose home occupation was going to be in that accessory building.
No.
That couldn't be forward.
No, it's, it's the...
Excuse me one second.
These work great by the way. Those are, they work great.
It might be a dimensional, dimensional setbacks in the back, Bruce, under the footnotes. It might be there.
Okay, because, because I just seem to find it here.
I know we addressed it before.
I went looking for it for business and found it recently, so I don't know if it's been changed or if we're, if we're thinking of it now.
I mean, we can't table, you're talking about twenty, table twenty-eight?
It's a good, good dimension, so it's in there. It's an appearance in the variance. In any event, you're only here before us on the lot separation, right?
Yeah, because the building needs to go.
The lot separation to allow for the portion to be conveyed or being connected with, combined with, thank you, sixteen Elizabeth. So that this structure can be an accessory structure to the dwelling.
Okay. And Ms. Gorski, to close the loop with where I started with you. Because town clerk has weighed in and told me that it's perfectly legal and legitimate for Mr. Stewart to have continued in his seat as a legal member of the board as a holdover until he gets sworn in, there's no further need for me to say that we're going to have another hearing and we can't vote tonight. And I just want to be sure that you're clear with that. Is that all right with you? And so I'm going to ask everyone around the room if you have any further input. I'm going to ask for it. And one thing we can do to satisfy your concern is say that the garage can be constructed approximately as shown on the plans presented.
Sure.
Okay.
I just, I just know that there's something...
I just, I just know that there's something in there that says it can't be forward, can't have accessory forward of the front of the house. I know we've done it.
Okay. Anyone else want to weigh in on anything? Does anybody else have any questions? Yes, Mr. Mere.
Just as far as the structure, I know we're not supposed to, is this going to be wooden structure? Is it going to be like a steel building or something?
Please, Mr. Thank you, Cheryl.
It will be wooden structure. It will be clad in the same green vinyl that my house is. The roof will be the same color, the trim will be white composite, the doors will be white, the windows will be white. So, it'll.
So, how long will we still go?
No, it'll be part, I wouldn't do that.
How tall is it? Just two-story or just a single story?
It's a single story.
Right, that's it.
The board can condition it on not, on it not being habitable, but I'm not sure I want to do that if they wanted or needed to convert it later into a, into a.
I just wouldn't go there. There's just no reason to go there. They'd have to put a septic, it would have to, just.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else? Yes. I don't think I've got you yet. Did you identify yourself yet for the board?
My name's Brian Scanlon. I'm here representing my parents who live on Florye Hetschel Road.
Okay. Where are you in relation, relation to these young ladies?
He's on Etschel.
Around the corner, okay.
Just friends.
The town property, the public property.
Right.
And I just want to clarify in regards to the paper road, which on the plan appears to connect with Elizabeth Street. When new closed lot lines, if they are accepted, I just want to reiterate what Ms. Robinson said, the importance that the town had access to that culvert to clean it out because my folks have water issues also. And I want to make sure that the town has access to that culvert because it may be impacting that.
My unders, may I address that?
I'm going to ask Bruce to answer where the culvert is first.
The culvert is on the Ellis's property approximately here.
Just drain the wetness.
And it is shown right here as a 15-inch pipe coming across. This is Ellis's property. These are the two we're talking about dividing. This is the house on the corner.
So, this will actually give, as you're deeding this land to the town.
We need a sliver here and a sliver here. This is still going to be on their property.
Still going to be on Ellis's.
And they, I think the town has a inferred easement.
Yeah, but it's not a deed of easement.
They actually come in, they actually come in once a year from.
Florence.
Florence Street path, Silvers Path. They actually come in with backhoe. And there's usually two of them. It's a concrete structure that the town built. And it actually has a well in it so that it traps sediment before it goes in across my property into the, under the cul-de-sac. And they usually go in once a year with a backhoe and clean it out.
But Mr. Scanlon's point is well taken. If there's no deeded right of access on behalf of the town to get to that culvert.
They're not coming across his property, they're coming across.
No, they have to go across.
Florence Street, there's an opening there that they come in with a backhoe and that land is town land.
So, they don't go across your property to get to it? So, then nothing you're doing would impede anything that's happening currently?
Right. They can get a backhoe over the stone wall, there's just a small opening there for people to watch it.
But they still walk through it, onto your property and touch the culvert that's on your property.
Oh, yeah, they park the truck there and they'll walk in my property to get there. There's no problem with that because it's the paper road.
The culvert is on the paper road?
Negative.
That's what I heard you say, that's why.
Because the paper road runs through there and that's where the opening is and everybody walks right through there.
When they walk through there.
We're talking two different things.
When they walk through there, they're walking on the paper road. When they get to the culvert that's on your property, Bruce is saying they have to exit the paper road.
Concrete culvert is not on my property, that's on town land.
Oh, so this is two then. There's a concrete culvert on the town property that they're taking care of. There's also a pipe on your property.
The pipe on your property is only serving your property?
No. It's served by this whole trench that comes from Florence and then it goes into that pipe.
I think it's really important that if there's a pipe on your property that is doing anything with water for the benefit of others.
Well, I'm fine with that.
It needs to be documented or at least listed in our decision that we didn't overlook it. That's what I think Mr. Scanlon wants us to do.
And they come in and from the, from the cul-de-sac, they clean down the embankment where the stream runs under the cul-de-sac. I know they do that because I've seen them do that. So, I don't have a problem with the town coming in and doing that. That can be part of the restriction.
And that's what I wanted to concur because when I've seen them looking out my back window, they've been actually cleaning the stream. So, this is separate from the culvert behind my property and I'm sure it's on yours. It's a stream that needs to be dredged in order to prevent the water.
You have a difficult property.
Mr. Scanlon, still get to stand up, just giving minute.
Their concern would be sometimes the access point from Florence, a piece of equipment, it may be so much water in there and then a piece of equipment won't be able to get in there. But it could get in from the other side, from Elizabeth Street.
I think if I, tell me if this works, if the decision contains a condition that says the town will be, the town will continue to have access to the pipe on the Ellis property for clean out and maintenance. I think that will handle it because it's only the town, it's not anybody else, and it's for clean out and maintenance limited. And I'm not worried about you being good neighbors. You've been in town long enough for me to trust you, but if you ever sell or move along or something, I want to make sure it's on the, it's on our decision.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for bringing it up.
Any one else have any other concerns that we haven't addressed? I ask that with trepidation.
I do have one question.
We didn't ask you.
You're, you're in purgatory.
Go ahead.
When these two lots are attached, that means it's going to be part of that paper road. Is that going to be deeded to the U when you deed part of the circle to the town?
He already owns it.
And right away, of course.
If I could answer that, when he attaches them, he still has to depict the paper street running through it.
Yeah, I know the access will still be granted to the town probably, but not the ownership.
No, he still has to show. The ownership is the Ellis's subject to the right of passage and repassage by anyone who's taken a deed off that plan. Does that answer the question? The ownership is Ellis's if, if.
Okay.
Okay.
That's my concern. We'd become part of his property, yeah.
The ownership will be Ellis's for everything but the cul-de-sac that they are proposing to deed to the town.
Okay.
And as part of that proposal to widen Elizabeth or to deed.
Yeah, around the cul-de-sac, yes.
Cul-de-sac and Elizabeth because it looks like the edge of pavement is outside of the paper street limits. So, you would still propose that Ellis's give up?
They give up some land here and some land here.
Oh, but not on, well, see, this is the paper street.
This is the paper street.
This is too. You said it was never accepted.
Well, it was accepted and then it was never recorded.
Does the town maintain it?
Town's maintaining it.
Okay, okay. All right, I'm not going to address it then. I'm just not going to address it. Okay. All right, anybody, I'm going to, I'm going to say, you know, going once, going twice.
I think I hand.
Oh, there is a hint. That's no, please do, it's, it's fine.
Make sure I understand. I thought I heard it, you said that Elizabeth was going to be widened.
No.
No. My mistake.
My mistake, I, you did hear it.
There's no asphalt changes. What there are is they're going to widen the right of way to, so all the asphalt is on Elizabeth Street. Right now, some of the asphalt and roadway, it's outside, it's on private property.
Okay, I think I got that. So, in other words, no drainage.
That's correct, no, 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 we're working on a new pavement.
The pavement edges, when you drive down and you turn around at the end, you're outside of the right of way. That pavement is more than 40 feet wide and that's what the right of way is. So, we're trying to incorporate that into the right of way.
Thank you. I'm surprised you got it, I didn't get that. Is everyone satisfied? Any other questions? Okay. I'm going to ask the board if there are any other questions.
Nope.
Then I'm going to accept a motion to close the hearing.
I make a motion to close the hearing.
Second, please.
I'll second it.
I know. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, the board's going to discuss for a minute and no further input will be accepted from you guys. And board?
He could have broken this off and just sold it to himself. And then we wouldn't have all, been able to have all the neighbor input and all the discussion and been able to allay all these people's concerns and worries. It's nice that it happened the way it did so that we could do that, but technically I see no reason not to allow this the way it's been laid out and the way it's been presented.
Right.
I'm kind of surprised we're dealing with lot lines. That sounds to me like it's a planning board A and R situation.
No, it really isn't.
But I, this is the first time I've seen us talk about changing lot lines and so on, but I don't have a problem with that otherwise.
When you're here another 10 years, you'll be able to say.
Yeah.
You did that once.
Usually setbacks, it's like, you know, coverage and setbacks and so on.
No, I have no, no issue at all with it. It's very straightforward to me.
I do think it's.
And alleviated, I see no reason why this would cause any additional water issues anywhere in the area.
I do think it's important that we state that the garage is allowed to be built as presented. But I know in the zoning by law, somewhere there says it can't be forward.
Yeah, I think we might as well throw all the birds, put one down here. I am going to, because I've written it all down, I'm not going to make the motion, but I'm going to word the motion and then someone else will have to make it, so. I think that the motion is. Grant.
Due to?
I think we want to grant a variance pursuant to section, Bruce, who want to help me do?
173-27.
27?
Yes.
173-27. To allow the applicant to combine lots in the following fashion. Zero Elizabeth will be combined with lot 50.
It's split first.
Yes.
You have to split zero Elizabeth into 55 and 56.
All right, zero Elizabeth will, will be split into lots 55 and 56 as shown on the.
Rose Landscape Plan.
And then, the applicant will combine zero.
No, no, 56 with 32 Loxley.
Lot 56 with 32 Loxley.
And 55 with 16 Elizabeth.
And record an 81p plan at the registry of deeds to document that configuration. Subject to the following conditions. The resulting two lots, I think, with the following conditions. One lot will equal or exceed 40,000 square feet.
Correct.
16 Elizabeth.
16 Elizabeth will equal or exceed 40,000 square feet. And 32 Loxley will be, will be.
Remain a non-conforming lot.
Will remain a non, very good, will remain a non-conforming lot.
Of roughly 39.
We don't need to say it.
Yeah, I think it's good to say it because we're showing that we're not really making it substantially smaller.
I have the wrong number.
Twenty, 28,000.
32 Loxley will remain a non-conforming lot.
600 and 700.
Okay.
We don't want to be.
So, that's one condition. A second condition is.
You take that.
I got the 81p. No further subdivision, right?
Well, that's with the 81p, that's it.
Well, I'll just say no further subdivision of those lots. And then we're going to say. Condition that the town will retain or the, the 16.
The access to the drainage ditch on 16.
Okay, access to the drainage.
Structure, right, it's a structure.
Is it a structured drainage ditch?
It's a 15-inch pipe according to.
That's a structure.
The town will continue to have access to the pipe on, what's the number?
16 Elizabeth.
Elizabeth.
The pipe on 16 Elizabeth to clean out and maintain.
Okay.
To just maintain.
Yeah.
Just say maintain. Keep it simple.
For maintenance. And then.
You want to address drainage concerns?
Yeah, I'm going to do that all together with the wooden structure allowance. Then we're going to say, and the applicant will be permitted to construct the garage on lot 55 substantially as shown on the plan.
Lot known as, you better put known as because it's no longer being.
I mean, area known as, okay.
It's no longer going to be that lot.
A lot garage on area shown as lot 55 on the plan. I'll word it better when I'm writing it, but it'll be very similar.
I'll word Smith here.
Thanks.
Me, too.
I designed it anyway.
With.
He's our clerk.
Garage allowed to be built as shown on the, approximately as shown on the plan provided that the garage have drip edge on the.
Eve sides.
Eve sides with infiltration trenches.
With stone drip edge.
Stone.
Thank you.
That does it.
The stone drip edge on the eve side.
I think that's it.
I think that's it.
That's all you need to say. You've taken care of drainage, you've taken care of access to the pipe, you've taken care of making sure it won't be divided again. Given permission to build the barn.
Thank you.
Or garage.
Garage, not a barn.
Okay. And access for the, for the pipe for cleaning.
We already had that.
I think we've covered everything you guys were worried about, okay? So, can I have somebody?
I'm so moved. No, I'm moving because you read it.
Brad moved it. I'm sorry, John moved it. And who's going to second?
I'll second it.
And Cheryl, second.
We won't let purgatory boy.
Yeah, just play it safe and just.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your explanations and your time.
Bruce should always do an excellent job of making everyone understand everything.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you all for coming, for your patience and your help. You were all very helpful to me.
We have good minutes.
Nice to see all of you. Thank you so much for your support.
I just wanted to know, I love that dog so much, I can't stand it.
I'm so happy.
Did you end up with wonderful dogs?
He's two years old now.
Is he a labradoodle?
Yes, and he's, I know, full of hell.
Oh, I'm so glad. Everyone tells me that, they're just a wonderful breed.
Oh, he's just.
He's been saying that, it's just.
Two years old.
I made the mail, someone, she asked me what his name was, my brother, that was your brother.
That is my brother Mitchell. He just, in fact, his birthday is Sunday. That's funny, my, he's deceased, but his birthday is Sunday. His daughter took one from the same run at the run.
Oh, no kidding.
And a straight-haired run, yeah. And the straight-haired runt, yeah. Isn't that funny?
We're very well behaved.
Very much.
Just doing her job.
Nice to see you again. It's been many years, John. I think you're always delightful.
Thanks for.
We're not closed yet. You're welcome. We're not closed yet.
Yeah, we have chores. We have to do.
We're supposed to do minutes tonight, but I'm tired. Can we put those off?
Let's postpone the notes.
Okay. And I'll take a motion to.
Adjourn? I make a motion to adjourn.
Second that.
He's going to second it.
He's seconded it, yay. All those in favor, aye.
Aye. Re-adjourned. Hit the switch.